Okay, I'd like to call the Board of the City of Independence for the City of Independence for March 1st, 2021. The roll call.
Jason Eckert.
Here.
Kelsey Grau.
Here.
Rich Tyson.
Here.
Robbie Barczyk.
Here.
Brad Holtz.
Here.
Five present, one vacancy. Public notes given, Lenny's?
Yes.
Everybody got the minutes from the February 1st and February 18th meeting? Any corrections, additions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Brad. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, public comments?
I have a question. Since there's a closed session every month, is there a way the following month you could give the taxpayers kind of a update, kind of what the closed meeting was about to a certain degree and...
Well, we can't tell because if it's closed session, whatever's said in closed session, you cannot repeat.
Not details, but...
If there's motions made in there, then they are put out in open session, then the motions are made in open sessions, so then the public knows what it was about. But if there's no action taken, if it's just discussion, it's just for in-house. That's the idea of the closed session, otherwise it makes the closed session mute. You know, if you go and tell everybody what it was about after you just had a closed session. So if we do make any action, any action taken, that comes out in open session and we act on it. But if that is closed session, it's just a discussion. So that is something that we don't... It's not for the public to hear, we gotta make a decision.
And I understand not coming out with details, but on your closed session on the agenda, could you just give a little bit to the public, kind of what it's about, the subject matter?
It usually does. Usually you say like this, like closed session today, it says the sale of public property. And so we're trying to sell public property. Usually there's a hint one way or the other of what we are discussing. You know, it's not like we're... And there's reasons for it to be in closed session. But...
If there's action afterwards, it's in the minutes.
It's always in the minutes and it's, yeah, I mean... So if we go back, I think like last, did we make a motion last time, I think, in closed session? We came out, we had to make a motion, and we approved it in open session, and that's public knowledge.
And where can the public see the minutes from the previous meeting?
Uh, does Carrie post those yet?
She's got some of them posted.
Yeah, she put, Carrie tries to get them posted on the website.
But like, yeah, last month's minutes won't be on there until after they're approved this month, so...
Yeah, they couldn't put last month's until tonight when we approved it.
Right, okay.
Next up. Anything else? Vito?
For key.
Nothing. All right. Old business, like dredge update, Rich?
Yeah, we had that Zoom meeting there right after our last monthly. Brad needed with Russ. He really just needs to know where we're gonna put the dredge. You know, the sand. Come up with a few ideas, I have to check in, the one of them yet. What's, you know, maybe selling it. It doesn't have to be there for a specific time.
Oh, it doesn't, that's good.
No, so we could maybe, you know, sell it as it comes off, let somebody else, you know what I mean?
So is there an idea that we're just gonna put it on that land that we own over there by gyms?
Yeah, yeah, the pile would be 20 foot tall or so if we did that, you know, and you got your slopes. But the idea I think is going right now is that we'll try to get rid of it as we're dredging it. You understand what I'm saying? Don't pile it there for a long period of time.
You're right, it does not have to sit for any period of time for it.
It does not have to sit. Because it won't contaminate, it's just... We don't have to let it leach out.
Yeah.
So...
No progress then, other property next to it? Rent it, lease it?
That's a no-no. I should buy the whole farm.
Did, uh, well, you know, that's...
Yeah, did that once.
What does she want?
I did.
Hey, what does she want for it?
Yeah, that's what she wants for it.
There you go.
Are you, because it is, you know, we could just turn around, maybe sell it, but we don't want, you know?
And then we can go down that road again, she seems to be getting annoyed with us asking.
Okay. So did you talk to our engineers about it at all and tell them what?
What engineer, who do you mean?
Were the engineers at a Zoom call?
Well, Russ was an engineer.
Who was?
Russ.
Russ was? Yeah.
Did he say, did he have a time frame, how's it coming? I suppose he can't do it.
He can't do nothing until we find the final spot. Brad me looked around at stuff in the city too, where we could haul it to.
Yeah.
And he is gonna get us some estimates on, uh, on some trucking estimates too. Russ was.
Yeah.
And...
Worst case scenario, we could fill some of that... We filled some of that back lot that we have there yet, we could even pull it out there and we add to it.
Yeah, we could haul some out there, we could... There's a couple of our places, Brad had an idea going by the wastewater treatment plan, maybe put something down there. You know, it's... But we have, for him to go forward, we have to have a definite spot.
Well, we might as well just definitely say, let's go with that spot there.
Yeah.
For everything and if we gotta haul, if we do, we can come up with another spot or if we can always throw that in there. But at least we can get it going so we can get that dug out.
Yeah, we could, we could put the definite spot would be there, and then we'd say we're gonna move semi-truck loads over to the, behind the hatchery or, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
We could always do that, and if we don't do it, we don't do it.
Can we haul it ourselves?
Yes, we can.
So...
Is there any way to figure out what's exactly in it?
In the, in, you mean the quantity of dirt?
No, what, what it is.
There's nothing in there, even, like Rich just said, Rich just said, Brad, it doesn't have to sit for any length of time, it's just basically sand.
Okay, sand, yeah.
That's why he was asking if it was sand or if it's got a lot of dirt.
We need to...
Some mud.
Well, we had, when we dredged last time, that's basically what it all was to, we said, yeah.
Yeah, we, uh, we're exploring the ideas of us hauling it ourselves.
Yeah, I think that'd be easier.
Well, it is to a point, but you gotta see if it's cost effective, you know?
Trucking is expensive, yeah.
Trucking is expensive.
If you can truck yourself, it makes it a little cheaper.
Right? We don't really have, if we had a couple quads, yeah, that'd be nice.
Brad may have talked about the idea of us buying two quads and using them for a project and then selling them.
That's not a bad idea.
So, I mean, we've gone on the roads that you're talking about, so...
Okay, well then, what's the next step you guys are gonna do here?
Uh, gotta get ahold of the guy from the pony, where that was one of the options that we came up with, is that maybe if it is mostly sand, to have them truck it and either sell it to them or get rid of it.
That wouldn't be a bad idea, but they might, they like to take Phil.
Yeah.
I'll take one. But that, yeah, I can, I can see that would be, that'd be handy just for a couple days.
Between the stone and the old snap, I didn't wanna really be bugging him just yet.
Okay, what?
Spring is coming now, so let's get it done.
Okay.
You know how that goes.
Anything else, you guys? Anything else, Rich?
No, it's what we got, that's where I'm at.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Next up, fire station door repair.
Okay. So we have, uh, obviously the, for our discussion last month, previous months, the need to repair the service doors, the fire station has come to underlight. And we've been gathering information to see what kind of cost would be associated with said, with said maintenance. What we have here, we have three different bids, one from Jurewski, one from Mr. George Gimias, and also we have Mr. Quo for materials, and Steve has provided, Steve won in a fire chief. So Ben has told me, with his bid, that his isn't all or nothing, that there wasn't, there wasn't any line item specifically set aside for just removal and installation of parts if we could come up with those materials under super price. So this is as is. George has laid this out in such a way where he's got cost of materials on one line and removal and installation of the new materials on the second line. And I did reach out to him just to make sure we have an apples-to-apples comparison on the, on the bids, asking if this bid included the painting of the doors, my two minutes paint job, you know, waterproof, and he said that is included in here, and if he needs to write it out, spell it out in the bid, to make sure that it's on offer, if he would be willing to do that. And, I mean, I guess I'll let the numbers, you guys can see the numbers and let them speak for themselves, and we can judge on which route we would choose to take. Seems pretty, fairly straightforward, I mean.
Yeah.
Any questions about it in this group?
Well, the, the doors are apples-to-apples, correct? Good.
Correct.
Any motion approved, or?
If that's...
I would say...
The path to choose to take.
I guess, yeah, I suppose we should have that discussion first, huh?
So we're in charge of the maintenance of the building here?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that to myself.
Yep.
Does Starlet's bid include getting rid of the old ours?
Just material, there is just material.
There's no labor, no...
No labor, no...
5500 for the...
Just the material.
We're in charge of maintenance, but it's shared, paid with the district.
Well, it says in that contract, yeah, we're supposed to split it with them, but...
Contract and ordinance?
In our agreement, I should say, not contract agreement. Fire district agreement.
And I believe I shared that information with them a couple months back.
Do we have a date of when these want this done, by?
No, we just, they just wanted to see what kind of, what, if any action we wanted to take with this, and obviously with the spring and summer months fast approaching, it would stand to reason that's would be the most ideal time to be taking on the duty.
Well, probably getting other stuff.
What's that?
Well, before you get into other stuff.
Right.
Either one of those companies, I guess. Are we thinking getting it all done, labor and everything? I mean, we don't wanna be messing around trying to put these in, right?
No, I think, I think that bid's a pretty, uh, self...
Yeah.
For another...
Speaking for themselves.
Yeah, for another...
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars?
Cheap.
They have to do it.
Yeah. Mess with all our time, and you've got our time, and you're right back there, yeah.
I guess I, I'd make the approval, the motion to approve George Gimias' bid to replace the, the doors, uh, contingent that we put a date on when we want it done by, and that he puts that painting in there.
Okay, motion?
Painting, isn't it, you want to spell it out?
Yeah, like, spell it.
Okay.
Motion would be to approve George Gimias' bid contingent that he revises it to include painting at a cost of $6,322 by Rich.
Secuted.
Secuted by Riley, it'll be roll void.
Kelsey Grau. Rich Tyson.
Aye.
Robbie Barczyk.
Aye.
Brad Holtz.
Aye.
Jason Eckert.
Aye.
Friday's one vacancy, motion carries.
You want me to have that discussion with George?
Yeah, I think if he just gets that clarity out, it'd be great.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. Thanks for doing all that.
What date do we want it done by?
Huh?
What date do we want it done by?
I think if he can have a...
By the end of April.
Uh, I don't know, he's pretty busy.
Pretty busy.
And I'm gonna hope, what's the timing to get the doors to, I mean, just to get...
Oh, yeah, that's true.
You know, so I say if you got it done by August.
June 1?
June 1, that's good.
That's not, keep her out, that's far enough.
March, April, May, June.
Four more months, two months.
March, April, yeah, that's three months.
Yeah, I would say June 1.
Is that what you guys want?
Yep.
Okay.
But you only take a date.
What's a date?
It'd be a good rainy day project. It's all inside work, mostly.
What's a date?
June 1st. Okay. You good, Jason?
Good for me, if I don't know, it's good for you.
Okay, Parsons Energy Group. Over.
Yeah, since the last meeting, uh, we received a signed certification that I need from the landowners regarding the lease rights to the mine operations, so that's covered, and we're still waiting for a final version of the letter of credit that's needed to be in place before our RVs permits become effective, so I would expect that should be on time, there's no reason not to think of what these... Hold it.
Okay. All right, anything else, Lauren? And then, anybody have any questions on that? Huh? Nobody has anything? All right. Go on to new business, help Red Gun Club, that's put on there because the Red Gun Club has just been discussed, it's in early stages of... They're thinking that, you know, the tent costs $3,000 a year, just for the tent for the fishing cat, just for a one-day thing. And they thought, well, and it's gonna, it's gonna go, but nothing but up. So they thought, they would see what the cost could be to put up a shelter in the park, and it would be open, and this is just a conversation, that's what it looks like. They, they're gonna just even finalize what it would be to build it, if they can build it, and they're gonna check to see if, you know, the DNR's gonna let them build that close to the lake. Uh, it's, it's as many square feet as the tent would be. It'd be open and people could use it all year long, it'd be just like the shelters out down there now.
Same park?
Not park.
Same old park.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that way.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Well, what it is, it's 30 feet wide for 100 feet, going straight this way, north to south, major south to north, and then it angles, and then I think it goes 50 by 60 that way.
So it's the same construction as the shelter that's out there now?
Where's the, where's the hydra, dry hydra or not?
Oh, that's farther down, that's way here.
Farther down of the way?
Yeah, yeah, they made sure they didn't come close to it, that's way over here. But here's the core, really, you know, it's way over here. We weren't gonna bother, we wanted to strike that, that was one of the things that we, everybody agreed. Now, this, you guys, this is, I just am letting you guys finish the conversation, this is just early stages. So just to see if you guys would be interested in it, or I wanted to first bring you guys up to speed on it.
The way it's laid out here, then what are we doing with the existing structure?
Well, that, they would either... That would be up to us, we could have, take it down or move it. They were gonna try to incorporate it into the new building, but it would just be too hard, you know, matching roof lines and everything, so we might be able to move it out.
This is gonna be just one giant...
It'd be like a V...
A V and make, meet there, so it'd be all open.
If we can move it, yep, yep.
So my two questions, or one, we've answered that, the dry hydra, okay, we said that's out of the way, then?
Yep.
We're good there, but one of my questions was, and I also fielded a phone call this weekend about the very same, will this, will this or will this not, in my opinion, what obstruct the view for anybody who's, has kids playing in there around the park, near the lake?
It's gonna be open, it's not gonna be closed. Then we'll see right through it, let you do the structure that's there now.
I'm not totally sold on, I know what, I get the idea of the open structure, open layout, but I'm not totally sold on that.
You're saying, like, they get too close to the lake?
Yep.
They can't see their kids?
Well, it's, there's, they're, they're not gonna put signs on it, but they would, you know, it's just something...
Oh, I think they're trying like contests.
The contests, they probably just wrap plastic rubber to it closely, like, like they did with the small one.
Yep.
And you know where, the place to put that old one, I was thinking, we put it down, where are you gonna put that other field? Put it down there, because that field doesn't have any, you know, the parents are so far away if they go by the other one, that you could put it up there.
What's the size of that structure?
It's 30 by 25.
I'm getting ahead of my, we're getting ahead of ourselves, but...
Yeah, it's, you guys, just, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I mean, uh, if everybody was dead set against it, I would tell them that, and then it would mute the project.
Well, it could use it for many other things too, if you have to be instructed, like, you can have graduations on there, and it would be multipurpose.
Just another idea that...
And they were, and they were talking about paying for it, Red Gun?
They pay for it though, yep, I said, we were, the only thing I thought we would maybe try to do something there with is maybe put in two bathrooms. I mean, I would have a porta potty down there all the time, which is kind of a, you know, if a guy could put, somehow attach to...
Pull the bathrooms?
Yeah. If it would go through, I think that would be a, a good thing to go with. But they are still way...
Could put the bathrooms in the center, in the B?
No, you would, because it'd break, it breaks up your flow. And actually, Brad, the, the water comes in down there, the nearest sewer is up the street by, by Brad's, there's no sewer on the street.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think all the sewer from here goes out that way. So we'd have to go up to Brad, there's 100, right where Brad's driveways, right where your driveway is, Brad, that's where the nearest sanitary is. So, I mean, it's, just, I want you guys to hear, hear it here rather than hear it out there. And I, like, I told the guys from Red Gun Club, when you get something more detailed, this is very, very rough.
Absolutely.
And, and see, and they gotta check all their, on their side too, if...
What?
So, that's...
I like the concept.
I think it'd be a nice addition to the park, you know?
Or we could use it for any days and...
Yeah, that's to say, you would be needing any days out, they wouldn't have to buy a tent.
Right.
I do agree with Jason, just that hopefully it doesn't obstruct the view of the lake of being, the parents being able to see.
Yeah, I mean...
The benches or anything in there.
They wanna have higher ceilings, so that you actually might even open, you would open up, is that, the ceiling's in the one that we have is only 28 feet, so... But we'll go down the road and just bring you guys up to speed, so... All right, now tree removal, okay, I put that on there, you guys, because I talked to, they're gonna tear this house down, you know, as everybody's aware of.
Mary, it's a motor?
Mary is. She's taking that big ash that's on her property down, but they gotta top it. We've got three trees here alongside this building, and then one big, uh, I think it's an elm, but that elm, part of that ash broke off, and broke off part of that elm, and the elm kinda leans this way too. So we wouldn't have to take them all down, it was just an idea, since she had the bucket truck here, and I talked to Eli and Kenny about it, they could cut it up, but if she had the bucket truck there, we could maybe contact the guy and see what he charges, just to chop down the, you know, take off, to top it, bring down the, those three smaller ones up here, and that big elm, and then we wouldn't have to worry about, because those are on our property, the liability is if it falls on our new house, you know, if we're stuck with it, if it falls this way, it'll fall against City Hall. So, it's, I just, I wanted to bring it to your attention, it was just an idea, so, uh, what do you guys think?
I think we should look into it, I mean...
And she had?
After...
She's gonna have the house down, so if you're gonna take them down, it's a perfect time. Eli and Ken said they could cut them up, let's her down, they'll cut them up, and they can get rid of ours, not hers, but ours, but they said they, there's no way they could top it.
No one can determine to do it.
Yeah, especially if she's smashing that house anyway, so, and she's gonna have the guy there, I don't, I didn't even bother to call the guy, because it doesn't make sense to get a bid if you guys don't wanna do it, so...
When is that gonna happen, honey?
I thought she said she was gonna take it down, she's either taking the house down on the 22nd, or the trees coming down on the 22nd.
This month?
This month, she's taking it down this month, because I know she wants to start building next month, I think George has got that house. So, if you want to...
We need trees removed, and there's gonna be a guy here, we need to do it.
That was kind of my thinking, but, uh, you know, you gotta get, you guys gotta decide that.
You know, obviously we'll have to figure out what he's gonna charge us, but...
Right, I mean, I, I think we'd, we'd ask him and also get another bid from, you know, somebody else, just we need competitive bids, but it doesn't pay to go forward if, if nobody wants to cut them down. Some people are, you know, some people are about trees.
I know, but that, that big one is old.
That elm is, yeah, and then these three here, they're not real big, they're only about this big, but they're, they all go in different direction and, you know...
Can we come down and plant new?
Well, I don't even know if we plant, we could plant something new and...
Like something else that would go there?
Yeah. To make it look decent.
Doesn't look so open.
Yeah.
Something that won't hurt her house like down the road.
You know, we could put some kind of...
I gotta look for like a motion?
Well, I don't, it's a, if you guys wanna do it, you got, we need a motion to approve to go ahead and get a estimate, and, uh, then I just have to look fly out to all you guys, if you approve cutting them down, I still, if you even say, can you say at a reasonable cost and leave it up?
But you could do a motion to get this and then have it to the lowest bid.
With the approval, I...
Then we should also, also consider getting the stumps out too, right away, so everybody remembers that.
Yeah, I don't think he can get them out. Well, if Mikey Massey's there with the backhoe, he might be able to dig them out. I wonder if that's what her plan is, you know?
He can ask for nothing.
Yeah, Mikey owes us a favor, favor anyway. Okay, need a motion to have, if you guys wanna proceed with this, then I'll get some bids and keep in contact with you guys.
Motion.
Motion by Brad.
Second.
Seconded by Cleo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Three As, one A, and one absent, then. Four As and one A, one absent. All right, next up, uh, update on ordinances.
I think that's the ordinance we were talking about for cars, abandoned vehicles and so on. Yeah, there really isn't any update on that yet, so we're gonna, we're gonna worry being a short month, and then all being mining, and the government, we haven't had any meeting, I haven't had a chance to talk to the officer about it, I have a copy of some of the notes that he made, but we'll try to do that during March.
So what'd you come up with?
We'll be wanting to run a bunch.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. All right. That's all on that, guys, anybody else have anything on that? If not, we'll move on to discussion of moveable street equipment purchase, Jason.
How many more is considered on that? That's what it was stacked on your mark.
I don't have any more information on that.
Nothing?
Well, that, as I said, the only new information I would have, we did purchase a new city truck, that was, that's about it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought you were gonna.
Okay. She was mentioning the skids there, and I had no.
Why, it was the last time I put it back on.
Right, and I think we're gonna, next month, but it says, that was the lead.
As far as discussion of, but we already gave them X amount of dollars.
Correct.
Who's the, this was a private vehicle, why is the, what's the deal with the red trail blazer?
I don't know, why, what's going on?
It's out there.
It's sitting on by the hatchery, what's going on, why is it out?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see that. Oh, the red one?
Yeah.
It was out there.
Yeah, they just put it out there.
I mean, is it something that they were gonna use it or not gonna use it, I mean, maybe they could trade it in or whatever too.
Or get rid of it, 'cause they, we put some money, we put tires on it, and then just.
Thought they were all ready, and it was gonna be kinda the city runaround vehicle, and.
Yeah, but they said, yeah, they were using it for a runaround, go to other things, but I, didn't die or something.
Yeah, something's wrong.
Something wrong with it, or something.
I thought it was something with the four-wheel drive switch was out or something, but.
Yeah.
I can ask Eli if it's.
Cause it's open, pump house.
It's open, yeah, it's one of them.
I'll talk to Eli.
Okay, I also just want to, cause I just noticed about thirteen, when I went to, I don't know.
No, I mean.
They split it up there last week.
Yeah.
Sometime last week.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we can find out.
I was wondering that, like, is there cars that in there?
Well, they've been cars out there before, when they had the, when they had some cars, and some drug trucks, then, then they take them and put them in there, but that hasn't been, yeah, that red, that red car catches your trucks, it catches your eye when you.
It does.
I'll look into that.
You don't want.
All right, thank you. Next up, street banners. Um, we got a bid from Cole. And, what was that? Eighteen hundred, something like that.
We voted on it last month.
Right, I can't remember what it was.
We came back because we were gonna, he said, he was gonna do us some designs.
Right, but he didn't, he thought we were gonna give him designs, and I asked him for some designs, and he, he's pretty busy down there. Anyway, so, he said, what kind of designs you guys want, and I don't know, how do you guys wanna go about getting the design? Do you wanna have, draw them up yourself? Do you wanna have the schools, have a contest for the.
For anybody, open it.
Arts class in the high school design banner?
I can tell you, you don't want my drawings, so.
But I'm just saying, we, we need it pretty quick, so we can get them printed, we can get them up. Usually Eli puts those up in April, I think, don't he?
It's tough to do a.
Well, usually by Memorial Day, cause we usually get the flowers by then.
Yeah, so, so, if this is March, so if we had like.
It'd be tough to do some sort of a school contest, and that's sort of a very good time. You have to have it out there this week, give them two weeks to.
They gotta done by the middle of April. And then, if we got it to, uh, Cole.
Cole's got it.
If we got it to him by the middle of April.
What, we should look at it or something?
Four weeks to print them.
It says independence or what?
Well, I don't know, the other ones, you know, you said.
These, the long ones are going.
These are, these are gonna be the same height, they're gonna be just a little wider than, they're gonna be like the winter ones. The winter ones are, six is just wider than the summer ones. Or do you wanna just have him, that's what, that's what I'm here to find out, what do you guys wanna do?
Or we make them the same as the others?
No.
Ah, you gotta change pace, Brad, that's boring. Can't be boring.
What's fresh, I don't remember, where were the old ones?
They had the clock tower, you said you had a picture of the city hall.
Yeah. And it said, city of the dependents.
They said, yeah, welcome to the dependents, or city of the dependents.
How many years have we used those for?
We used them for six years, seven years. We did the street, and what, fourteen?
Fourteen.
So, yeah, and the summer ones take a lot more abuse, because they're out there a little longer, and the sun just pounds the heck out of them. The winter ones are, they're not the worst, but.
Uh, we did, the last time, we did half red and half blue, and the only thing is Eli suggested we don't do that, cause it's hard for them, when they're putting them up to rotate.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so. So, what do you guys wanna do? Do you wanna just have the ladies' organization at their next meeting design something, and run with that, or what do you wanna do?
Open it up to whoever.
Well, I don't wanna get it too wide open, cause then you got, you know, you're waiting. I mean, I think we're on a little bit of a timeframe here, I don't think it's gonna be that serious, but if, if we just carnage it for everybody in town. Well, we can do that too, if you wanted, Claire, I mean. We could say in the citizens of the dependents, if anybody else come up with something for the banners, uh, you have to have some kind of a prize.
That's our Four Seasons Park listing.
You know? Yeah, so you guys have, you guys have to come up with an idea. So what do you, is that, what he wants to do is just open it up, save the money?
I mean, I, I, you know how it is, I'll just say that we always offer it to the school, or you always offer it to the Rainbow Club, or you always.
That's fine.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, that's fine.
And I know, like, the kids in school, they're busy working for the, that brand.
Okay, yep, yep, that's true. Okay, well.
The same.
So then we need a motion to, uh.
But are we gonna have a prize to go with it, or is it just gonna be the prize of, you did that, and it's on our banners for the next six, seven years?
We got, I don't know, is it, is it gonna have a hundred dollars in first place for the winning design?
Do we wanna have like some kind of bucks, just come down?
Any bucks.
Any bucks?
Yeah, any bucks.
Give them a hundred dollars in any bucks?
There, exactly what I was thinking.
So you're gonna open it up, open it up, and design, you'll have to give them the dimensions, and then take it out on the paper? Or you just, are you just gonna do word of mouth, or?
Put it, you gotta put it out there.
Okay, put it in the paper.
Put it on the Facebook page. Put it on the city Facebook page.
Facebook page, and then what, what do you wanna have it end?
Couldn't we do it through, um.
But we won't go to paper until next week, so we'd say, we'd give them a month if you would, uh.
Not in a month.
Huh?
Artists can come up with stuff just like that.
Well, you go April fifth, or April third, it's good Friday.
Have it ready for the next council meeting, we can vote on it.
Yep.
Okay, that will do have it, it'll have to be by the fifth.
Thursday or the Friday?
Well, the fifth is the next council meeting, so, you wanna have it ended that date, or you wanna have it to Friday before?
Friday before.
Okay, Friday before is good Friday.
Thursday before, that would be.
Yeah, it's Thursday before, that Friday before is good Friday.
Can't you just do it from Monday out, can't it just be the Monday out, I mean, we're all gonna look at it and vote on it, right?
You guys decide.
I mean, just three o'clock, Monday out or something, or five o'clock, Monday out, and get them here Monday night and look at them.
True.
Enough for me, it's gotta be forty days before we have a meeting, give them four extra days.
Four extra days to protect my stick, man, I'm gonna die.
We can hold up a glass of beer then, that'd be nice.
That's a big old man.
So we're having, we're having here on April fifth at three o'clock, they have to be in. I think we should also.
Strong.
Cleo, you wanna be mentioned to the school, see if they, they wanna put it to the.
Ooh, there's, not all the kids in the school are working on that thing.
No, I know, no, I'll.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then.
I'll say something to Tracy.
I'll, I'll go to the Catholic school, okay?
I'll get it to the paper tomorrow.
All right, sounds good. All right, next up, deputy clerk, training, July twelfth to sixteenth.
Gary dispensed, hope she can take the next year of clerk's classes. She did them online last year, I think they'd be online again this year. I think it's four hundred and thirty-five dollars, I think, for another week of classes, certification classes.
They're well worth it.
Yep.
Sure.
So, somebody wanna make a motion?
No approvals.
Motion, motion by Jason, seconded by Rich, you're a little slow, Brad, to allow Gary to go to, to take the classes from the twelfth to the sixteenth. All those in favor, saying, if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Next up, summer rec program.
We're gonna have it.
I will.
I didn't ask to put it on here, so I just wanna know what everybody wants. We're having a meeting tomorrow night.
Just to put it on there, to see if you guys have thoughts on doing it or not.
Oh, that was it, you guys wanna?
Here's what I, here's what I can tell ya, cause I've been doing some research and some phone calls, and, uh, from the sounds of them, White House can proceed with something. Blair and Taylor, under the direction of Taylor, that's where they're gonna fall under, but they're gonna proceed with something. Eric's gonna go ahead, Ali Strong's gonna go ahead with something, so. And Chad was looking into, for those of you that are familiar with our summer rec program, Chad was gonna look into our local league affiliates, like, Rukia's already canceled. He was gonna check with Drian, he was gonna check with L, not CFC, and see what they were standing, but, but everything that I, all the phone calls, and all the emails, and everything that I feel like so far. On the east side, everything is going forward in some way, shape, or form.
I think it is.
They did that a month and a half ago.
That's good.
That's not, that's not to say they're not gonna do anything, that's not gonna be backed by the city.
Well, yeah, that was the reason I wanted, cause I just wanted to make sure that the council was supportive, cause I think it's great that you guys are going forward with it. Make sure the council supports the summer rec program, and that you guys knew that you had the council backing, so that's what I thought was important, especially with the COVID year.
Yeah, it's tough for me to be objective, being the chairman of that committee and having two daughters, but I'll fall under whatever guidance you guys give, but.
Well, I know.
I know what I would like to do, but.
I think you did a good job last year.
Go forward with that.
I think it's general consensus, everybody, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I thought you guys handled it well last year, you guys did a great job, and you'll do, you'll be even better this year, so, good. All right, next up, any other discussion on that? Nope. License and permit, we got one bartender's license for Josie Rios. She's going to the Dow General, she's got her license here, then the police checked her out, and she has been approved.
Motion.
Motion by Cleo, seconded by Riley. All those in favor, saying, if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Okay, committee reports.
Well, see here's.
Adios.
Was that the ambulance board meeting, I put Dave Spott there.
Take care.
It was a week ago, maybe, can't remember what day it was, but supposedly they moved in over the weekend in the new building, the meeting was held in the new building. Some interesting things I took out of the meeting was, for being the first time in a few years that I've been on the board, is that they're only getting fifty-six percent of what they bill out, paid back to them. Something I'm gonna probably address at the next meeting, if I stay on that committee, you know, after, because the next meeting's in May for them.
Oh.
Oh, you're for.
Well, for the guys, yeah.
Reconstruction.
After, after the reorganization or whatever, we do.
Oh, no, I don't think there'll be any question of you being.
They gotta be elected first.
That's right.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, the building is very nice, um, uh, they spent probably more money than they should have on the last stuff. I mean, that's my opinion, you guys, whenever they have an open house, you suggest everybody goes, takes a look at it, it's nice. But they spent a lot of money.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's about all we had on it.
I heard that, it's very nice.
It's very nice.
Um, I just, one of the members, their friend was telling me what this weekend, and she said it so much better than staying in the house that they do, that she was more willing to pick up more nights, because she had a decent place to sleep, rather than sleeping in mold.
Bedrooms are kinda like a hotel room, they're really nice, there's four of them, uh, you know, the garage is good sized.
So we have three ambulants, or two?
We have three. And they only put three bays in, so I mean, I figured out how, but.
Wait, so they say anything, remember at the last meeting they were talking about, they're gonna, they had, was it defibrillators they were trying?
They're, yep, they, uh, they're getting them with Gunderson, uh, they had them, and they went in the budget that, left my notes at home, but they're expensive as heck. And they're getting driven, but they had it, they, they were within their budget constraints that they put it in, so, we just, we've already approved that, so.
See, they are going through Gunderson.
Yeah. This is their buying them with Gunderson.
With Gunderson, or?
Yeah, cause their bill comes through Gunderson.
Yeah, their bill comes through Gunderson.
They get paid through Gunderson.
Because they're using that, them to administrate their.
Their doctor, whatever, yeah, their medical.
Their medical stuff. Um, now that you bring that up, the subject of paying off that loan came up.
Yeah.
Sounds like the two municipalities that paid their whole amounts aren't gonna get the benefits of any, uh, adjustments in the population. You know, like, in Glencoe and Lomond, he paid it all in one chunk ahead of time, maybe there weren't that big chunks either, but.
Yeah.
Uh, the rest of the municipalities that are in there are, um, there will be adjustments, you know, due to more population, so the payments should be less. You understand what I'm saying?
But now we pay our ambulance bill once a year, and that's all included, and we write it in one check?
No, they paid the extra, what was it, when we, when they come asking for money.
Oh, I see, that.
That extra.
Okay.
The whole, the whole deal.
Yeah, Lomond and, Lomond and, Lomond and Glencoe, I think, paid theirs. I was gonna say, Lomond and Glencoe, Lomond and Montana paid theirs, all in one chunk.
Rather than doing it yearly.
Rather than doing it yearly, letting it ride out the year, the term of that.
Only, okay.
Yeah, any donations are going against the loan, and they have, they're at six hundred thousand right now.
Are they still doing any fundraisers or anything?
They're gonna try to do some fundraisers yet, but they're, they're at six hundred thousand, and I think they're got like eighty-six thousand pledged through businesses that wanna spread out their donations over years. You know, like pilgrims, they pledged so much this year, so much this year, so much this year.
Yeah, okay.
They said, without having them, I know it's with me, I'm sorry I forgot it, but, sorry, they're all down, you all have money coming in yet, so. But anyways, yeah, nice building.
Wouldn't they get an open house, did they say?
Uh, they don't know, cause of the COVID. It wasn't on the schedule for the next two months.
Well, I know too, because there's some that are taking the advanced DMT classes, and they're doing them there at the new facility.
They have a nice.
Which, someone I know said it's very nice, that they can go there, because I said, it's Zoom, but this way they're right there, and Debbie's there with them.
Yeah.
Inviting them. Is that my daughter?
Well, it's good that they.
We all can.
And it's good that they have the.
You know, I mean, she's doing it out of her own heart.
Yep.
It's, it's in Board Services, I mean, like, they put a lighted sign on the side of the building, on the south side of the building, so basically for aesthetics, you know?
Yeah.
So you can see it when you come into town, I mean, maybe they.
I remember, I heard a lot of people say, oh, are they in the new building, you notice?
Wasn't that sign donated by Bernie Hesch's family though?
No. The technical stuff was donated by Bernie Hesch's family, all the computers and all that stuff, I'm pretty sure that sign was not.
So I thought I read something that was.
I thought, yeah.
Yeah, Bernie was a, a big, yeah, ambulance guy, he was, for years, he did a great job for years. All right.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Rich, any else?
We have another, two months yet.
That's a lot, yeah.
Any other committee reports, Cleo? Jason?
Water and sewer committee, not a lot this month, uh, permits for the Bruce Valley Four Seasons project were said to be gone over last week, and as well as the loan, loan award meeting, I haven't got the details of that, we'll like to. As I said, we hear something come out, I don't know, finance meetings, it's about something entirely different. Uh, we also have bids in for, um, doing new roofing projects at the water, wastewater treatment plants. Coming pretty spending for a total of about thirty-four thousand dollars to do both, we're going back to the drawing board of that, and get some other ideas, cause we feel that's a, a bit on the high side. The, uh, once proposed ten percent increase in the sewer rate has been scratched, as the DNR tells us, that's, uh, we have to go back to the drawing board of that, and. More discussion, cause that's gonna be on the, that's on the topic of, uh, the meeting for tomorrow night.
I was not sure, I was on my own.
We already discussed the purchase of the new city truck, the Dodge, we'll, 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 on that. Uh, the grease issues that we've been having, they had a, um, study or conducted done by Bushy down here, and there was no new findings with regards to that, so they gotta go back to the drawing board and find the source of all these. Source of all these issues, with the summer months last proposed, and you got a sneaking suspicion that some things will come to the forefront with that. And lastly, we're looking into and moving forward with the trial of some, of a diving knapping system, which will give us a layout of all the water and sewer lines, all the valves, you know, all laid out in the night, it, it's a really nice. Ben was his name, I forget his last name, excuse me, but he did that, I gave a real nice presentation, I, uh, laid it out real nice, it's, and for the cost, that's, uh. It would be really nice, and a real benefit to the guys in the department to have all that at their disposal, and any number of things that you can have along with it. Reports, tasks, work orders, you know, um, distance and elevation rankings, you know, anything in, everything is timestamped, when you, when. Timestamp with date and user entry, if anything is updated, if you do repairs and such, so that all the information is current, so that the phone went through file, it is a, it's a really nice, really nice feature. And I, I think it's something would, if it proves itself out, we're probably gonna move. It is a, it's a really nice, really nice feature, and I, I think it's something that, if it proves itself out, we're probably gonna move forward with it, but that's more a compliment, I, I'm not gonna put the curtain for the horse.
That was very nice, though, especially like, little things like, if Joe wanted to know, is that, we missed that hydrant when we flushed, you can go back and-
Yep.
You tap on that, I agree, and say it through, it was flushed on this date, and that was it, so, yeah.
Yep.
It was pretty impressive, especially when they gotta go find something, but it'll put them, I think the one they were looking at was, put them within six inches.
Yes.
Of the shut-off.
Yep, or whatever they were looking for.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, it's, it was a pretty impressive.
It was a very good.
Pretty reasonable.
Yes, very good presentation, very good.
Okay, that's it? Anybody else have any questions or anything? Okay, next up, pay the bills. Have you got any questions on the bills? If not, need a motion to approve?
What motion?
Motion by Riley to pay the bills.
Second.
Seconded by Brad, he's a little slow. Gotta get him in.
Get it done tonight.
We roll vote.
Rich Tyson, Bradley Barch.
Aye.
Riley Foltz.
Aye.
Jason Nickram.
Aye.
Aye.
Five ees, one vacancy, motion carries. All right, next, need a motion to go to closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five one E. Wisconsin staffs for the purpose of deliberating and/or negotiating the sale of public property where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Motion.
Motion by Cleo, seconded by Rich, you roll vote.
Bradley Barch.
Aye.
Riley Foltz.
Aye.
Jason Nickram.
Aye.
Lewis Graham.
Aye.
Rich Tyson.
Aye.
Five ees, no, one vacancy, motion passes. All right.